I'd like to call to order the Monday, February 4th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. We did not have a work session tonight, and at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Walter Gallup to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. God of our fathers and of our nation, we are assembled here tonight to conduct our civic businesses and carry out our responsibility as appointed and given to us as citizens. We humbly ask your presence to possess our minds and our hearts as we carry out our duties. When we must act in our deliberations and there is division among us, give us the patience of Job. When we must defend our sacred freedom handed down to us by our grandfathers and our grandmothers, give us the wisdom of Solomon. Guide our business with the virtue and the purity of a child. Through our hard work, oh Lord, and our opportunities, we have become a blessed nation. Yet, we have not finished our work. We work for equal justice for all, for opportunity for those willing to work and share. Our work is never finished. Use our hearts and our minds to continue to work for the dream of a country sitting as a positive example for all the world to see. Help us, we pray, never to give up our dreams and our joys. We offer this prayer in the name of our Lord, who, living and dying, taught us there is hope and there is redemption. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gallup, I'd like to thank you for coming out this evening and for all that you do in our community. Thank you, it means a lot. Next item is approval of agenda. I have a couple of changes. Under board appointments and new business, under item, I'm going to add item three would be an appointment to the planning board. And under consent agenda, we're going to take off item six, surplus resolution for sheriff to dispose of seized weapons, and add item eight, which is the East Almarl Regional Library Agreement that was on our agenda last meeting and we took off. So I'd like to have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, I will move to public comment. Ms. Keane, did we have anyone signed up? Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'll close public comment and move to public hearings. Item A is public hearing in action on PB 1225, Corolla Light, PUD, Phase 13, request for special use permit for an office warehouse. The property is located at Lot 2, Phase 13, NC 12 Ocean Trail, Tax Map 115B, Parcel 2, Section 13, Poplar Branch Beach Township. And since this is a special use permit, any that wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this item need to come forward and be sworn in now. Seeing none, gentlemen, please put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for an office warehouse use in the Corolla Light Plan Unit Development. This is filed under the old UDO, so this is one of the last, one of the few remaining cases you'll see come before you filed under that old UDO. The property at this location is currently zoned general business, and you can see there on the zoning map. It's located at the south end of the Corolla Light Plan Unit Development, just north or actually adjoining the Monterey Shores Plan Unit Development. The property is currently vacant, however, formerly it contained a wastewater disposal area which has subsequently been removed, so it is indeed a vacant site without wastewater infrastructure on it. Some of the surrounding land uses are, to the north, you have a real estate office and sewage plant. To the south, you have a utility yard owned by Dominion Power, and of course, it adjoins a vacant property in Monterey Shores. To the east, you have a residential subdivision, that's the Wellhead subdivision. You see there's a handful of houses that join this property to the east. And following to the west, it adjoins that same utility property and has frontage on NC 12. Land use plan designates this property and most of the property surrounding as full service. As you know, full service is a designation that does allow commercial and residential development, and is typical of what you see in the Corolla subarea. Property is to be served by the Southern Outer Banks Water System, so it has county water. It'll have central sewer and be serviced by Carolina Water. And what you see, and you can see the site plan before you now, on that site plan, west is pointing up and east is on the lower margin of the site plan. It includes three office warehouse buildings, and those three buildings are proposed to include four units. And you can see they're pushed back on the property, actually adjoining the residential parcels and have been pushed back away from NC 12 on the proposed site layout. And then you see the empty or the vacant tract of land that is adjoining NC 12 on the top of the site plan. That is slated for future development, so you may see something there in the future, but that's not under consideration tonight as part of this request. In your case analysis or in the staff reports, as you know, since this is a special use permit, you have to meet, make sure this proposal meets certain criteria outlined in the UDO and in the permit. I'm not going to read those, but that is in your staff report, and we have made proposed or suggested findings for you to make. One thing I'll note on this that I want to go through is, this is an office warehouse use, and it does include primarily metal buildings. It's kind of a warehouse type use, which is unusual for Corolla, but I'll note that in the current, or the old UDO, excuse me, it does allow for that type. The old UDO does not have architectural standards, so the ability to do these types of buildings or these types of facades are permitted in the old UDO. One thing staffs tried to do, knowing that and understanding that there could be some compatibility issues, we have asked the developer to retain existing vegetation as much as possible. If you look back on the aerial photograph, you can see along the eastern property line adjoining the Wellhead subdivision, there's a significant amount of vegetation. Some of that vegetation is on the subject property, so a lot of that vegetation is on the residential lots. So obviously, they can't control vegetation on the residential lots, but I assume the residential law owners wouldn't clear that vegetation. But we've asked the, and there's also, as you can see, vegetation, existing trees adjacent to NC 12 as well. So what we've tried to do in lieu of the metal buildings or the warehouse buildings that have been proposed, we've asked for as much buffering as practically possible to remain and be preserved, because obviously, mature vegetation provides a better buffer than newly planted vegetation. And areas where they do have to remove trees, we've asked they go back in, in accordance with the UDO, and plant native vegetation to help fill in the gap, so to speak. And what we've done is a condition of approval, and the staff and the TRC do recommend conditional approval, is we've asked that once the grading of the site is complete, once they've done grading everything out and we can see the building pads, that they provide a detailed landscape plan for which we can ensure that adequate screening will be in place and hopefully buffer these buildings as much as possible from NC 12 and from the adjoining properties. The planning board heard this request at their January meeting, and the planning board did recommend approval as presented, and that motion for the planning board carried unanimously.
All right.
With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Woody?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Idlet?
Yeah. Okay, would it be appropriate, Ben, to put in the motion, if it is to be approved, to maintain the existing vegetation, or is that something that will come in the next phase when the landscaping plan is put together?
Yeah, in the staff, in the staff recommendation, we've kind of indicated that maintain the existing vegetation as much as possible, and they've indicated that on their site plans. I mean, I think they'll do that, but I will say, I think that the best way for us to do this is let the staff, after the grading's done, after this permit's issued, let us go on site and try to work with them to do that. But I think it's, I think it's covered in the recommendation on the site plan.
Okay, I guess my question, real simple, is would that condition help you to be able to do your job?
It does.
One of my main concerns is the screening issue, and I want to make sure that that is taken care of.
It does, and this board's support of that condition will help us as well.
Okay. Second point. The businesses will be operated, as far as customers and delivery trucks and that type of stuff, everything will be on the west side or the NC 12 side of the building, correct? There will be no alleyways on the backside with the doors and that type of stuff that will be on the east side of the buildings?
That is correct. The entry to the buildings, there are no entries or drive oles between the buildings and the residential properties to the east. There's actually a stormwater pond on that, on that shared, there's a stormwater infrastructure piece behind the buildings that, you know, should help actually with some of the runoff as well, hopefully, but no buildings, no access.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, no doors or no access.
Okay. And I think the last thing probably is, I seen where Jason had been the gentleman in your office who had kind of been in charge of this. I noticed he had some recommendations, and I think you have indicated that they, all those recommendations have been followed and we're good to go there.
They did. They had to make, the developer and the engineer had to make some adjustments to the site plan, and they have done that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, along with Mr. Idlet's or Commissioner Idlet's question, the part about the doors on the east side of the building, that will be, that can't be changed at a later date. Is this going to be something that stays in place forever and ever? Amen?
Good question.
Yeah, that is a good question. We allow minor changes to site plans. If it were deemed a major change, it would have to come back to you for approval.
My question is, can we stipulate?
You can. You may want to add that as a condition, just to remove the, any possibility of that.
Okay.
I can, yeah.
I think your vegetative buffer and the stormwater's probably going to make that a moot point, but you can add it in there, and then it is a moot point.
Yeah, I think as I looked at it today, the drive line back there probably is not wide enough for a driveway anyhow.
I will note, one thing, I don't know this for sure, and the engineers will probably address this. Now, there could be a need that on the backside of that building, they may have a fire exit or something like that, and I assume this board would allow that.
Aesthenic exit is different than a loading exit.
But not for, yeah, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? I see the applicant representative is poised and ready to answer these questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Open the public hearing and ask you to give your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Warren Edes. I represent TFP LLC and Quabell and Associates in Kitty Hawk, and we're here to answer any questions you have. Ben's done an excellent job of kind of briefing you on that, but if you've got any, want any further details, I'd be happy to elaborate.
We've heard the concerns about using the side adjoining the residential houses and...
My only input on that would be that we accept that condition, but unless there's a need for a fire exit or some other future need that's a safety concern, then we would want to have that ability, but the whole idea is to hide this, so to speak, use, not hide it, nothing to hide, but to conceal it from NC 12. Obviously, the most valuable part of the property is adjacent to NC 12, so we want to do what we can to, you know, put this, put this working operation back and, you know, and cover it well with vegetation. We've been working with staff and trying to, you know, either meet or exceed the landscaping requirements. We've got a 25-foot buffer along that rear property setback. We've got multiple stormwater BNP's to sort of, you know, geared towards low-impact development, so we're, you know, we're cognizant of all these concerns, and we are trying to engineer through them. We've also changed some of the foundations on the building so that we could push them away from the existing vegetation as much as possible, so we are, we're making every effort to meet or exceed the requirements in the UDO.
Well, as you well know, there's some nice homes on the east side adjacent, and there's very sufficient screening there now, this full growth.
And I'll tell you, I think the landscaping plan that we're going to generate, that's going to come through, will be more opaque on a human level, you know, certainly not at 20 feet, but on a human scale, that, you know, it will be an opaque buffer.
Yes, sir, Ms. Petry.
I know, short term, what are the plans that this building is going to be used for?
Right now, there's a rental company that is going to use for, not, you know, laundry processing, not laundry washing or anything of that sort, but they'll have, they'll bring items in for distribution to different homes up in the four-wheel-drive area in Corolla. One of the buildings is, right now, doesn't have a tenant, and then one of the buildings will be used by the, by Twitty and Company for their operations.
My concern is that, we all know that vacation operation is, you work a lot of long hours. My concern is, if we have any ways, I'm sure if you're on vacation, you don't need to hear truck traffic at 2:00 in the morning.
Right. No, we're aware of that, and there won't be any trucks backing up at odd hours, that's something that we...
Yeah, because there's a backup alarm at, you know, 4:00, 5:00, you don't need to hear, or dumpsters being rattled around, being emptied, so is there, Mr. Woody, is there any way to stipulate? I mean, these people come here and pay a lot of money for these homes, and I don't want to affect the, the possible rental income for the future of certain homes if, if these trucks have a negative impact or whatever as far as operation and things like that. We don't have any way to control it, do we?
You'd have to establish some sort of hours of operation or some kind of...
You understand where I'm going with it. If you're on vacation, you don't need to hear beep, beep, beep at, you know, 6:00, 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, is my concern.
You could establish some sort of hours of operation and attach that condition to the permit.
If there's a special use permit, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but there, there's an option for, I mean, if people were to complain, if there were, because the, you know, the truth is, this operation is a part of a large real estate rental company who makes their living making sure that people come and have a good time. And I don't think, I think if anyone's sensitive to that, maybe, maybe they would be. It's something that has come up in our discussions with them, that we absolutely don't want that to happen. You know, the tenants at this point have said that that won't happen. Obviously, we have to think about 10, 15, 20 years from now if that were to change, but we're aware of that, we don't want that to happen, and I, we're willing to work with staff to come up with some common sense way of maybe allaying that fear. I'm not sure how we...
Mr. Woody, if there's something in there, that language that we could, you know, I'm not trying to make ridiculous hours, but I would think, you know, nothing before, say, 6:00 in the morning, nothing after 10:00 at night.
You could do that, or, I was going to say, I guess if you got enough, if there were enough complaints, I mean, the board could always revoke the use permit or establish a revocation proceeding to address that, or amend the use permit to add hours of operation. So you could do that now, or you could see how that goes, and I think that would be an option in the future.
Well, I think we all agree that it's easier to remove than it is. I'd rather start off with it in the beginning than I would try to deal with it later on, and then it's a long drawn out process. So I would like that language in there if we could.
I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to add that language in there tonight without the people that are going to be operating the business to be here to speak to that. He naturally can't speak to what their hours of operation are going to be. I would submit that there's other businesses that have dumpsters clanging first thing in the morning, the food line right there's got homes behind it, there's other things. I don't know that, and if the owner is here to discuss that, then maybe that would be something, but to throw an arbitrary hour on there without, without having an interaction with the owner, I would feel a little hesitant to do that myself.
I'm just saying, if we can address it at a later date, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I think that's a consideration and has to be taken, you know, into account.
Yeah, like you, Paul, I would hate to put something on there, and it be someone who, who was operating inside of a building and not have any impact on the outside and telling them they can't open until a certain time or whatever.
I understand, but you know what I'm talking about.
I do, I certainly do. I understand both sides, yeah.
All right, other questions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll move to approve the amendment to PB 1225 with the finding of facts, staff recommendations included in the case analysis, and also, as I stated a while ago, to maintain as much as the existing vegetation as possible to provide screening and that also no business, big doors and that type of stuff be conducted on the east side of the building.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, new business, item A, consideration of amendment to ordinance regulating outdoor tour operators. Mr. Woody?
I'm presenting that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCree?
As we suspected, when you adopted the ordinance regulating outdoor tour operators back in January, we are back before you tonight with a proposed amendment to the definition section, particularly the definition for bus. Particularly, Commissioner Petry and I met and did a little research and determined that it could be better defined as set forth in this proposed amendment to you, which would be that a bus shall mean a vehicle with a chassis not greater than one ton and overall length not more than 25 feet. The second proposed amendment is a staff suggestion, a recommendation to give more flexibility, particularly to the planning staff, which is going to be charged with receiving applications and reviewing applications for tour permits with regard to the size of the identification number that the county will assign to each vehicle. The ordinance originally provided that a number shall be at least six inches in height, but in order to give some flexibility to the size and location of the identification number on certain vehicles, staff's recommending that that be modified so that it provide the number shall be no less than three inches high, and gives, again, staff some flexibility to, on a case-by-case basis, determine how large the number should be. So this is commended to you for your adoption.
And as an ordinance amendment, if it passes unanimous tonight, it's in effect. If not, it has to come back for a second reading?
That's correct, at which time it may be adopted by a simple majority vote. And I would also note that, that if you were inclined to adopt it tonight, it would be appropriate to make the motion that it is effective upon adoption.
Yes, sir.
The change in the size of the numbering was, the reason for that again was what?
I'll let Mr. Woody maybe address that, is his staff again that was concerned about that.
The number, the number was six inches, and what I think we're going to end up doing is a five-inch number, but I just asked the attorney if he would just say no less, say no less than three-inch number.
So you will make that determination?
We will.
Staff will make that determination and not the operator?
Yeah, staff, we actually, we're actually, the county's ordering the decals and numbering, so we'll actually purchase those. We've got a size we think is visible and works well at five inches.
I have a question of Mr. Woody as well. There was discussion about having the drivers, have them come in and make sure that they sign off on the rules so that we don't have problems after the fact and saying we didn't know what the rules were. Is the staff, in fact, going to request over at the satellite office that the drivers come in and spend a few minutes and make sure that they understand the rules?
We do. The application, when they sign it, there's a statement that says they have read and understand the tour operator ordinance. Now, what we may do to take that another level further is actually conduct some sort of training or just a seminar where we can have some one-on-one interaction, but at the very least, they're signing a document saying they understand the rules.
Mr. Woody and I had that conversation, and my suggestion is, and I feel strongly about it, that we do follow through on the indoctrination stuff, and if so, we, I think we should get his office, we should get, if the sheriff would be okay with it, even have someone from her office.
From the deputies.
One of the deputies to be there as well, to cover the operations on the Outer Banks, very simply, and I feel strongly about that, and I agree with you. You and I discussed it as well.
I think it's just glad here to make sure everybody knows what the rules are.
Exactly, totally.
So that they can continue to operate and we don't get complaints.
Totally agree.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is consideration of trash removal service on Beach Strand. I believe that would be the county manager.
Chunk, did you go over B?
B.
Oh, I'm sorry. B, consideration of ordinance to provide that a member of the Board of Commissioners shall serve on the Currituck County ABC Board without compensation. That would be Mr. McCree?
I'll present that, Mr. Chairman. Under the general rule of law that the county Board of Commissioners shall determine the composition and manner of selecting members to boards and commissions for the county, and further that you are the appointing body for members to the ABC Commission or ABC Board, this ordinance would provide that one member of the ABC Board shall be a sitting county commissioner, and that that commissioner will serve without compensation or additional compensation for that service. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Three-year term.
Yes, that's statutorily, it's a three-year term on the ABC Board.
All right. Any questions of Mr. McCree?
I have one question. Is there any travel involved with, for that board at any distance?
I don't know, other than to their meeting location within the county, and then I think they do have a conference that maybe they attend, but I don't know if their budget covers that or not.
It is all local meetings in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Didn't have, didn't make a motion. I'm not sure if you received a motion on that.
Make a motion for approval? Second?
I think I need a drink of water. Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now the motion is carried. Item C, consideration of trash removal service on Beach Strand.
Mr. Chairman, as you've mentioned, or as was mentioned at our last meeting when we approved the lifeguard contract, historically, the board has contracted with the lifeguard services to do a Sunday cleanup of all items left on the beach, but as the board may recall, this past winter, you adopted an additional resolution that expanded the scope of items that were left on the beach, basically unattended items left on the beach were to be removed by ordinance. The combination of that workload is something that the volunteer fire department felt like they didn't want to take that on, they wanted to stick with their primary service, which was lifeguard services, so we have bid out that program. And tonight, I'm bringing to you for consideration a proposed contract with Corolla Surf Shop, who would, once a week, from basically Memorial Day to Labor Day, do a beach cleanup. They would do a tag program where they would tag on, probably like on Tuesday, they would tag unattended items left on the beach, and then in season, July and August, they would do a second collection during the July and August, where midweek, they would go and collect everything that had been tagged, and on Sunday, pick anything and everything left up on the beach. And that was put out for a bid, and the contract is in your, your agenda package tonight for consideration, and it's staff's recommendation that we move forward with Corolla Surf Shop in a contract amount of $26,100 for that service. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Be paid for out of?
Occupancy tax.
Occupancy tax. All right, any questions?
And most of that funding was already in the budget last year, but it went to a different service provider, we're just separating that out into a separate contract.
I do have a question along these lines. I do have a question along these lines. What are we doing to get with the rental companies and the homeowners' associations to educate the rentals about leaving the tents and stuff out on the beach?
The planning staff, along with the tourism department, have been meeting, and they put together a program where they will be hosting a meeting with all the property management companies. I believe that has been scheduled for, I believe, this month, I believe.
Yeah, we have individual meetings through the month of February, then there'll be a larger meeting in March.
Where we are going, not only the tents and other things, but going over most of the ordinances that we generally get the most complaints about during the course of the year, to go ahead and start educating them, to, to get them to be part of the education process so that we can get information, information and materials into the hands of the renters, get it into the cottages. We're also working on a signed package so that at all the pedestrian access points to the beach, there'll also be some, some kind of signage there, reminding folks to please, you know, help us keep our beaches clean, remove the stuff each night with you. We're also going to engage lifeguards to see if we could actually put information on their stands, so we've got a multi-pronged attack of trying to educate and inform, because the success of the program really is to get to them before they take the stuff to the beach so that they're aware of it. From our conversations with both Duck and Southern Shores, after about a year or two of doing that education, you start to see the results of it. But we do have a comprehensive program that planning and tourism is heading up to do just that.
Okay, any other questions?
Is this a one-year contract?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, I guess we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D is board appointments, reappointment of Daniel Clements and George Mears to the Whalehead Drainage Service District.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Item two is appointments to ABC Board, one would be a commissioner and one would be a non-commissioner or a reappointment.
I'd like to make a motion for David Griggs, commissioner on the board. Do you want both, both people in the same motion, or you want them separate?
If you can.
Gene Gregory for the other person.
And I would add this, by general statute, it says that the Board of Commissioners do name the chairman of the ABC Board, and Commissioner Gregory has been serving as chairman, they're in the middle of the building project, and I'd like you to include that in your motion.
So move, or I will, to keep chairman, Gene Gregory, as chairman on the board.
Any other, we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Item three is planning board, I believe Mr. Griggs has an appointment he'd like to make.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Stephen Craddock from, he resides in District Two, to the planning board.
All right.
I'll second that appointment.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Move for approval.
A motion for approval?
Second.
Have a second discussion.
Let's see, we have a resolution in support of the Second Amendment. I know that was something everybody felt kind of strongly about, and Mr. Griggs had asked what it'd be put on, so I'll defer to Mr. Griggs.
That is correct, you have any comments?
Well, the resolution is available for everyone to read, and I will not, I guess we will not read it to, because it is available, but I would like to point out just a little bit of historical background. I think some of us maybe have forgotten our history, and virtually all of the 10 amendments to the Constitution came about as a result of an overreach or an oppressive British government, and the Second Amendment was no different. On April 19th, 1775, British General Thomas Gage dispatched 700 soldiers to Concord, Massachusetts, for the purpose of confiscating the colonists' weapons. On their way to Concord, they were intercepted by a militia in Lexington. They were comprised of farmers, clerks, and storekeepers. A brief skirmish ensued, the citizen militia was defeated. This encounter later became known as the shot that was heard around the world. The British continued their march, march to Concord, where they again engaged citizens who managed to force the British to retreat back to Boston. I did miss one thing, when General Gage ordered the 700 British troops, that was that day's equivalent of an executive order. Well, the rest is history, and I was kind of thinking, Will Rogers once said, "If history doesn't repeat itself, it sure does rhyme." So with that, I would suggest and really encourage anybody, or all of us, to look at our history. Look, look at what caused these amendments to be adopted, what the reasons for them were, and it's as fresh today as it was then, and is relevant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Griggs.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item F, commissioners' reports, we'll start with Mr. McCord tonight, you have anything to report, sir?
There's a fundraiser at, I believe it's, it's the 16th, I saw, I've seen something on it about Facebook about 50 times, for, it was actually for one of a resident of Currituck County, for the Balance family, the individual that passed away, I guess, about a month ago. It's at Camden High School, it's on the 16th, just, you know, if everybody can support, support that, some kind of barbecue fundraiser. That's, that's it at this time.
Mr. Griggs?
Just a quick comment, Kevin and I went to New Bern for school of government, two-day school they put on for commissioners. We were accompanied by the county manager, and he kept us in line, and we learned a lot.
Good. They basically told you everything you promised you were going to do, you couldn't do, didn't they?
They did, it was more things we couldn't do than we could do.
Yeah, thank goodness.
David, the old saying goes, it's as important to learn what not to do as what it is to do.
Absolutely, I concur.
I believe, what was it, one of the commissioners, I believe he's from Hertford County, he's the president of the Commissioners Association, I believe he said, "Promise less, because it's less words you got to take back at the, at the end," or something, it was a pretty catchy slogan.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, I do, this, this deals with the seniors in Currituck County. There is a new program that's going to be offered to all the seniors in the county. It's sponsored by AARP, and it's a tax preparation and filing. That means that you can, starting this Thursday through April the 11th, get your taxes done free of charge. What you have to do is make an appointment with the senior center at Barco, and the filings or the appointments are for Thursdays, and each Thursday, if you have an appointment, you can show up and get your taxes done free of charge. I want to thank Diane Bray, of course, the director, and one of the volunteers, Joanne DeBallo, who was a former nurse in our county school system, who have worked very hard to get this service provided to our seniors. So I think that is on the monitor, so please, call the Barco Senior Center and set up an appointment, and you can get your taxes done free of charge.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Idlet?
Yes, sir. Week before last, I attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Agenda and Goals Conference, and I was your voting member, and I just want to report on what the top five goals as seen by the 100 counties of North Carolina were, and that will be sent to our representatives in Raleigh, and hopefully will be pushed by all the counties and all the commissioners that are being represented by these gentlemen and ladies to move forward for a state. The top one was oppose any shift of state transportation responsibilities to the counties. Number two, reinstate average daily membership and lottery funds for school construction. Number three was to oppose unfunded mandates and shifts of state responsibilities to counties. Number four, ensure adequate mental health funding. Number five, preserve the existing local revenue base. And I feel very fortunate, out of those five goals, four of them were my top, in my top five, that, that I had identified when I went there. So I feel very good about that. Maybe I am doing something halfway right now.
Yeah.
But anyhow, it was a very good conference, and it just shows, I guess, I said that kind of in a facetious way, because it was, as you see, it was everybody's top fives as well. So it just means that there's, there's a lot of priorities when it comes to funding at the state level and that type of stuff that's impacting the counties and how we do business and how we take care of our citizens locally. So anyhow, if we can get some of these adopted, I think we'll make our county better. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to represent Currituck, and I appreciate it so much.
And we appreciate you going. Mr. Petry?
I'd just like to tell everyone out there, it's not, the glass is not half-empty, it's half-full. Always think positive.
Ms. Gilbert?
Well, on the same note that Mr. Commissioner Petry just said, I am looking forward to our commissioners' retreat this weekend, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and, and get, get busy with everybody.
Thank you. There is one thing looming out there that folks need to be aware of in Currituck County. FEMA is currently rewriting the flood maps. I believe, Mr. Woody, have you had some contacts with them?
We have, they were supposed to begin in February, but it's been delayed, so it'll begin in May.
But I can promise you, the redrawing of the flood maps are not going to be to your benefit if you live anywhere close to the water. I can also tell you that when Congress readopted the FEMA, the, whatever the act is that does flood insurance, you are going to start seeing creep on your insurance rates for flood insurance, and they're currently being subsidized by the federal government, and they're kind of backing out their subsidy, so it's going to go more to market rates. So if you currently have flood insurance, by the time FEMA gets done, you can expect probably to have a pretty substantial rate increase on your flood insurance. And where it's really going to really have an adverse effect is on the outer banks and the people that live near the bodies of water, so I didn't want to say that. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't ask everyone to keep our fellow Commissioner Petry and your thoughts and prayers over the upcoming week, as he will be wanting them and needing them. So I'll let him speak to that if he wishes, but...
Half, half-full.
That's right, so with that, I will move to the county manager's report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And with that, I'm going to ask us to adjourn to a closed session for these two reasons. The first one is move to enter closed session pursuant to Section 143-318.11A3 of the North Carolina General Statute to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss the pending matter RF London versus Currituck County, and GS 143-318.114 to discuss a matter relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.